The swelling. Okay, hopefully the YouTube is firing up. Welcome all to this test environment contained in quite a long time. So obviously we didn't have the last one because it comes with the Queen's funeral. And there was really absolutely no room to put it anywhere else. We have a member of the public here, Mr Rogers. And before we start the meeting properly, we give you, uh, the other part of the meeting. They'll give you the opportunity to speak if you, if you will.
Certainly. Well, you say that? Yep, yeah. I'm named Harry Rogers, I live on Page Hill. Um, and have lived on Page Hill for about two years. Uh, there's a couple of points I might want to address. Is anybody here a holding pilot's license? That okay, great. Excuse me, don't worry about my breathing, I've got COPD, it's not a problem. So if you think I'm starting to panic or anything, I'm not. Couple of things I'd like to make clear before I start. This is about noise and air movement, light aircraft going over Page Hill, which has increased dramatically over the last few years. Um, one, I don't have a problem with Silverstone meets and weekends with helicopters flying here, there and everywhere. Because it helps our local economy. And two, this is not very commercial jets because they don't cause a noise problem at all. They're all very quiet. But light aircraft flights, and there are many, um, in actual fact, on the Queen's celebration this year on the Thursday, I gave up 17 midday 31 flights over Page Hill. Okay, the average today is between 10 and 20 flights over Page Hill, specifically over mine at Page Hill, which is near Phil Close. And these are flights that go directly over my house. It's not only light aircraft, it's also helicopters and they are noisy, very, very noisy. There's been one or two light aircraft over the past few months, and I've been recording this on video and photography. Um, one or two light aircraft that are obviously modern ones and you can hardly hear. So this isn't a blatant complaint that they're light aircraft. This is a complaint against old, outdated technology. Light aircraft have no sound system, are highly polluting. Um, and to qualify that remark, let me just give you a little bit of background. I spent 25 years in air cycling, working for both you, uh, English and American companies and ended up as a European salesman marketing director for the American company. I have booklets in British Library under ISB Enba Air something. I've presented to Ocean Nine, we have HS, the NHS and various other places. And institutions across Eastern Europe, America and the UK. So I feel I have a little bit of a qualification on judging what I think is polluting and what's not. These aircraft, um, and as I say, at the moment, it's well in excess of 10 per day. They are two different flight paths. One is east-west, one is north, uh, north-southern. And it looks to me from, uh, what I've gathered over the last few months, that this is a crossroads for light aircraft flight paths. Because it's not only one way, it's both ways. Um, I did actually manage to photograph a light aircraft several months ago. I've got the registration of it and I found it was based at Booker Airport. Um, and I went on the internet and said the flight plan, the flight plan for that was to come up from Booker Airport, do a U-turn right over Page Hill and go back again. And that's happening two to three times a day. I phoned up and said, look, if you have a word with the pilot, it's not fair to lose around uh, Page Hill when it's coming all the way from Booker. And I believe they were seen flights. And most of these small aircraft flights, I feel are unnecessary because as soon as the clouds come down and the weather changes, it dramatically reduces. Soon as it's a good day, it dramatically increases. Um, excuse me. The, um, the problem I've got is that, um, it's a lot of limiting for me. Now, my quality of life is terrible. This goes on all day, every day, never, ever stops. Uh, come, I mean, it's to a point where this summer, um, great summer, we're sitting out on patio with friends. We actually have to stop conversations to let the planes go. That's how low it is. Low class, low light flights come and go, we hit them all the time because we're at the bottom end of Page Hill. They last 10 or 15 seconds. Most of these aircraft launches last for up to two minutes because you can hear them before you can see them. You can hear the light they've gone. It's, uh, horizon to horizon. And it's just incredible how much disturbance they caused. If these are light aircraft on good day flying, I would suggest that they're not necessary. It's plenty of flights and I don't see why me and everybody else on Page Hill living bucking them should be subjected to this kind of noise and air pollution. People that are in two, one, two-seaters. Um, there's not many deep aircraft. There's one two-in-the-aircraft that flies over two or three times a day. There's also some light aircraft fly over two or three times a day. And I've got a video of one that comes up and does a loop over Page Hill like that and then goes back again. There's actually instances where light aircraft the other side of Buckingham towards, uh, Hammersley, they're doing sound tests in the middle of the day. So they climb to a fairly good height, cut the engine, dive, bring the engine back in, but obviously they bring it in under full throttle and the noise is quite bad. So, um, what I'm going to ask for is, um, it's Ryan here, by the way. I've spoken to him on the phone, the environmental guy, no. Okay, he said he was going to take this on board and, um, contact various people. I believe he said he was going to get, uh, a survey, um, done because of the noise and the air pollution and frequency and everything else. But if only he wants to see any, uh, videos, I've got something out. I'd be more than glad to show you. But it is becoming a real, real nuisance. Quality of life is gold. Can't even sit out on the patio during the weekends, especially during the weekends, and have a conversation with friends and relatives. You have to stop. As you probably know, because I've got two hearing aids on, so it's not as if I'm short of hearing anymore. Um, but it's just quality of life is done. Page Hill was never like this, it's built up and built up and built up. Um, during the lockdown, uh, I think there was four flights left. And now there are 10 to 20 and down. So I'll leave it with you guys because what I'm going to pray for is no flies over Buckingham. As there is over Western villages experiencing noise from Two Western Airport.
Thank you.
Um, I think because we can't make the channel, we can't make it this long. I asked for the chairman that we, um, um, gather the details and, and gender this item, take it forward outside the meeting necessarily because we need to ask some questions about, um, with flight people, what is the actual flight over Buckingham? And we need to establish whether we, it's changed what it was or what it was so that we can have a comment with, um, some, because, uh, um, there are more planes, I think probably coming out of lockdown, we've noticed them. Or, um, although I don't hear them that much in my house, um, but I'm in Badgers, so I don't, I wouldn't hear them over there.
I spend a lot of time outside in the summer because I'm retired.
Exactly.
Um, and then after 50 odd years of working, I just find it incredible that my peace of mind, the quality of life can be disturbed by so few people.
Could you, could you through the chair email the information you've got?
The videos and stuff.
I've got over 500 pictures and probably 40 or 50 videos. Um, so I'm not going to email them all, I'm going to have to give you a selection. Um, I mean, there is one helicopter that comes, I believe, from London and goes to Silverstone. And he goes right over the middle of Page Hill and I can actually see the windows.
The data would be better, you know, the bits, but you know.
Uh, well, the last videos and pictures I've been doing, the dates aren't anyway, but you can always get the data from a few people's and the meta tags.
Because you said, the chair, that, that Two Western has got a night and an eight flights and we need to ask why that is and and then establish what we.
No, they've got a fly zone around Two Western, I think because the local inhabitants got fed up with people flying over their houses. Um, but the CAA says, and this is a problem, if they're, um, commercial light aircraft, because there is one from Two Western that goes to Channel, I believe, every day, then they should come under the CAA, um, requirement that they don't fly over highly populated area and they don't basically disturb people. If they're light aircraft that are for pleasure or for pilot training, then I don't see any reason to be flying over a highly populated area.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know what our responsibilities are, but if we have the information, we can ask questions and then decide where it goes and whatever.
No, I think we, Claire wanted to say something in there with Clark, it's a question or comment.
No, sorry, the only thing I was going to add is I've been speaking to Ryan, who's taken this on board. He's contacted the environmental agency and the local and A3, is it called, Airbus Council?
Have you contacted the CAA?
Sorry?
Have you contacted the CAA?
You can't. Not on light aircraft. CAA are not interested unless it's a commercial flight. But they do have guidelines and the guideline should be followed by, I mean, w- we have commercial jets day over our time here them. And then I have to stop talking to somebody or two people in a light aircraft looking as high as to do a loop right over Page Hill. Um, it is far over Page Hill. And if you guys want, actually taking note of it on the weekend or something when you're out, it's from London North and to East and West, it looks like, where the crossroads are every single light aircraft flight plan around the area. And there are many, you've got Oxford, you've got Two Western, you've got, um, yeah, Booker, um.
Binmere.
Sorry?
Binmere.
Binmere, well, if that's here and there, I can't get to a few flights over the week, but um, and then you've got, um, uh, what's it called, Cranfield as well. So, yeah, I mean, if you want to have a word with Ryan, because he's driving this for me after the, um, a fiasco, I'd say he's been in contact with the environmental agency and all sorts of things, uh, because I believe he's involved directly with environmental stuff. Then, yeah, I'll be happy to send some information or get hold of him again.
Are you with it?
Um, yes, thank you, actually, I'm going to go and touch on what the Clark just said now, which is the CAA. Uh, they are responsible complaints on all aircrafts. Um, ideally what will be helpful is to get data, not the pictures now, or the time of the flight, if you know the, I'm figuring they are, things they are.
Um, no, I don't like all your posts, they're like single engines, sometimes two engines. Um, but if you go on the CAA, uh, website, it says that noise complaints are not dealt with by them, it has to go through about the environment council. Yeah, what, nobody whatsoever in contact with the CAA.
So what were yours? Do you promise not to complain? It's more the, um, of the frequencies, the frequency of the route, it's the route, um, the plane path. That's what your complaint is about.
My complaint is consistent noise 10 or 20 times a day, directly over my house times.
Quarter of the route.
I assume so because there's so many, I mean, if you get to midday, then you can guarantee you won't see three minutes without flight, probably five, 10 minutes. Because it's a midday flight.
Yeah.
If they go four miles that way, they're over open country side. If they go four miles that way, they're over, over open country side, although you've got a satellite store up there, so.
Right, so that's what I was going to say, that the CAA will be helpful. I know you've said Ryan's working it already, um, but we could pull things we made to the CAA. Um, that would be very, very helpful. Um, they deal with aircrafts and.
They don't, if you go on the website, you can try to complain that they make it very clear that we do not complain to them over noise problems. It's a local authority responsibility and not theirs.
So that's what I'm saying, you know, about the noise, about the route, not the noise, the plane.
No, I'm talking about the noise and the air pollution.
Yes, sir, it's the route, it's because the route, the planes are the planes.
Yeah.
Right, but the route that they're going over Page Hill, that's what the complaint is about.
Yeah.
So what we need is for them to change that route. And that's why you also referred to that, there's a village that has a new fly zone, the reason why they have a new fly zone is because we don't fly over.
They've changed the route.
Yeah, so they just change the route, so it's not the planes. And that's why I said the CAA, um, what the complaint reads about is that these planes are flying over Page Hill frequently. And the noise, you know, this, what was going.
But I suggest you spend ten minutes on the internet, go onto the CAA um, website and see what they say about noise complaints. You see, I'm not sure the commercial airline associate dictates, um, flight plans for light aircraft. They do for commercial aircraft, but I don't know for sure if they do for light aircraft.
Okay, so, um, I think we have probably got as far as we can this evening in trying to establish the facts and where the complaint is. We are of course not the local authority, so we can obviously make inquiries on behalf of Buckingham residents and if need be, um, complain on behalf of the town. If, uh, with, um, you know, we do understand that, that we are not the local authority. And that is Box Council. So we will look into this further, do we have your contact details?
Ryan's calling, yes.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so, uh, we will then be in touch to, um, get some more data and see how we can take this further.
Okay, uh, because I will not drop this. I will not drop it under any circumstances, but I thank you for your attention, your time. And, um, we're privileged, uh, extending to me to be able to address you directly.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for seeing you.
Bye.
Take care.
You're right.
Stop us in very, very distressing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay, I really can't make it any further. So let's start the meeting proper. Um, apologies for absence. I think we have an apology from Fran, so if you have any other apologies at all, ask for Dave's and council. Okay, so, uh, um, so, apologies.
I would be second apologies.
Yeah, good. Sorry, I should have not, saw you nod and I thought like, yeah, okay. Uh, do we have any declarations of interest pertaining to tonight's agenda? No? We then had a point four, again, point three, the action report, to receive the report and note the updated information. So, unless there are any actual issues that anybody wants to raise, we'll just note this. Yeah, Robert.
And just to say that, that's a future date, um, all the green spaces that will come back in the meeting anyway, so, um, um, being the team group, so we do need to, um, actually request for a position at future meetings, for point of progression of that, pretty easy. Yeah, that's all.
Ultimately, I think.
Uh, uh, yeah, thank you.
I think it is on the agenda.
Yeah, a verbal update.
Um, yeah, I've also thought with the, um, the cemetery land, are we, and we never find, it's on the agenda. So that will be discussed in the, in the close part of the meeting later. Because it does relate to contracts, we're not going to pick it up right now. But it will be discussed. Then, any other theories about the budget comments on the action report? Then let's move on to budgets. To receive the latest figure and also to look for thoughts and connections, but it doesn't matter, we've got it some procedures that goes quite enough thought to be, it's that information. I'll get this eventually.
Mary, come on.
Yes, Robert.
I mean, the buckets are where they are, chairman. Um, we're going to be having a more in-depth conversation in closed session about the next year's budget. And we can return back to questions about this because it relates to next year's budget at that point.
Yeah.
Margaret, yeah, I just noticed it's on page seven of 44. Um, in appendix B, cemeteries, 425 railings. I can't see where it is now, but 419.2%.
Yes, we think, um, we've been over budgeted in the chase and it's trying to get that corrected.
Oh, okay.
We're trying to get that one corrected.
And I also noticed on page eight of 44, um, friends offering was 4120. That was 489.8%.
We have got some money in the primary ground, we're from the heart of England, we provide for a grant. So while it's sitting on that budget line for the moment until we get the grant money, it will balance out in the end.
So that's income rather than, yeah.
That's, it, that committed of 5,100 is money that we are going to spend, but we haven't spent yet.
Right.
But it's sitting there because the Heart of England budget is a new budget line.
Oh, okay.
Because it's a grant that we haven't had before.
I was looking just for the things that seem to be way over this, because I don't, I have to say, I don't really get my head around all of this, I'm sorry. And 255 railway walk, Arsenal Hill totals was 261% overall. Is that sent partly to do with?
That's because of the.
The Heart of England income, okay.
Little balance, looking to the air.
And then, I don't know again whether it's just my misunderstanding of things, but from pages, page 1244 and following, seem to be repeated of eight, of eight of 44. Or am I just looking at it all incorrectly?
Yeah, it seems to be there twice. 1244, yeah, completely correct.
That is true.
I thought that earlier as well, appendix B appears to be there twice. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, as long as there's that simple explanation, that's absolutely fine.
We're not having it at all, though.
Because I thought maybe I'm just looking a bit too wrong.
Yeah, Robert.
Just through Clark, um, would we need just, um, obviously we all know that the railway walk is, um, partly owned by us and partly owned by the Buckinghamshire Council. We know the certainty, there's a set of, um, monies in there for section 106, which we know that we've all been trying to get them to actually, um, get the 106 put in place, um, to actually service the road. Would it be appropriate to at some point start a budget line in the sense that, um, some of those works are supposed to be done by Buckinghamshire Council when they're done, if they're done. Um, but even if we have a zero in the budget line, because, um, the land belongs to us, large section of it and as small section, it belongs to the university. Um, so in the sense that section 106, we need to enter some discussions about how they're going to deliver that because at the moment they're not delivering it. Whether that's something we should consider after precept, and if you're ready to cover a budget line of zero. Um, in case we have to, um, take some of that money to actually deliver some of the stuff on our section of the railway. Um, and of course, it won't be anything to do with the, um, other areas of land, which we may discuss later in the meeting, but if the part doesn't think we need a budget line, we don't need one. But I, I just wonder whether we need zero.
Wouldn't normally create a budget line when I'm not expecting that you're running it or taking money out of it. I think it would possibly just sit there being a bit complicated. Maybe one to hold on to until we actually got some reason to have some funding go into that.
And you'd create a budget line if we did.
We needed a budget line, you could create a budget line.
That's what it is there, thank you.
Doesn't have money.
That's, that's fine, you can grab your own.
Any other queries and any other statements? Then let's move on to the item on the fourth and third green flag award. There is a report, um, do you want to say anything?
I don't know, it's, um, it's explained between the, um, except for getting the green flag award this time. Um, but it's just explaining what we are doing and working on a number of time, and further surveys. That explains. It's a clock time and was ready to go.
Yeah, thank you.
Hmm.
All right.
Um, yes, I think, I think, um, I want to hear the report and, uh, I would commend the Green Team for what they've done thus far, and as well effort done and put into that. Um, I think one of the things that we're lacking was, um, detail on certain things, um, which I thought was, you know, that they think, but you know, it is, is one of those things, um, if they wanted, I think it's for us as a committee, um, to look at the recommendations and see how we can improve what our management plan is. Uh, but I think, um, on the face of it, on the positives I saw in the report, I think the team could be given a lot of credit for that. Um, the other stopper just details as to things like, um, who is, who is, um, responsible for making repairs, you know, little things that, you know, I think really shouldn't, it's great, it's great, right? But it's a management plan, I think that's what we've got planned on. So I think it's, it's a good thing and I do commend them, I think we should do it again next year.
Hmm, yeah. Go on and mention.
We might be worth seeing, asking, um, because Buckinghamshire Council got an award again, um, for their Harland area. It might be just worth, um, to see how they stored that, um, ask if they could copy this store for that, just to, to look at, to see whether, um, how they're storing that. Um, there were some comments about too many trees and, and some sorts of comments in our report, if I remember it correctly. I think it'd be worth seeing what they're storing it on and how they're actually scoring highly on it. I mean, they're, um, as we've put a lot of resources apart and we've spent a lot of money on the park and our park is probably used differently now to what the Harland Park is. And the Heart of the Park is very much, um, a rustic nature park now, um, which is maintained, just to see whether that's actually comparing life for life. Um, it could be that they are, um, whether, you know, it's quite difficult, you walk through, if I was walking through the park and I walked through the Harland over the bridge, um, and then walked along to Bolton Park, um, which, where they start judging Bolton Park from, um, in the sense that we know that our area of the park is somewhat forward of Buckinghamshire Council's owns the, the walkway and whatever, just to make sure that, um, that they're not, they're not judging it from there to there because some of the areas aren't ours. And, um, just to see that it might give us a clue on why they're more successful than we are. Um, um, it might show nothing at all. It might be worth asking if we can have it at all.
Sure, well, I, I read through it and I, if, if I was part of the Green Spaces team, I could really disappointed at it. I thought it was really nitpicking, um, and it was harder than, than was deserved. And I thought that, um, a really um, good thing that the team are doing are actually asking people what they want and are trying to deliver on that rather than trying to deliver what a team going around with a scorebook and ticking off. And I wondered actually, do the general public actually even understand what the green flag award is? Is it something that's really worth, um, trying to jump through hoops and, and get that toy?
Hmm. Margaret, yeah, bit similar really, just wondering whether Lee would say whether he thinks it's worth, because I know you've spent a lot of time on the management plan. And obviously, you know, we are all very, um, admiring of, the Bolton Park's such a lovely place to walk through, regardless of whether we've got a green flag award or not. Whether, whether you feel it's good use of your time and others' time to pursue this.
Yeah, I'm going to bring a report to the next, um, agenda in more detail about the city management plan and actually developing the action, action plan of that management plan a bit further so that we can apply for some more funding, a lot of sums of funding to carry out some quite major projects in the park. Actually, we think that class is better used by our time and, uh, going next year, maybe leave it a year and then reapply it by the year. When we've taken that bit further down the road seeing what we can, seeing more funding we can really get. But that takes a lot of time and, uh, you know, obvious time to, to get it all together. Um, so hopefully we'll come back with a bit more information next meeting, a bit more detail.
Absolutely.
I'm wondering whether there is a document that outlines the criteria for what the green flag aims are. And not so much what they expect of the applicant, but what their aims are in the first place. Is it the management of a park? Is it the dirt under the fingernails ability and produce from working in the park? I'd like to know rather more about that because if it's some esoteric, uh, box ticking thing. Uh, box ticking thing, then I would be very much in favour and so we can keep the green flag.
There is quite a few detailed criteria.
Yeah.
Do you follow, so the management plan is, does follow quite closely to that.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm sure, yeah, sure it does, Lee, I, it's not a criticism of you, you, I think you gathered, I was pointing my finger in the opposite direction.
Um, just briefly, I mean, we take some satisfaction in them getting a walk, because if we didn't clean the river out alongside you, they wouldn't be getting any points for that, would they? So, um, um, because we clean that river out quite often alongside the park there, and we'd be down there. If not, end of last autumn or the beginning of summer, we've been cleaning that out constantly, which is part of the river, is part of the park, so. Um, if we didn't do that, they'd probably be downscored on that, so it paid some satisfaction that we contributed to getting the green flag awards.
I know, I know that honestly, some really burning questions that we can have on this one. It will be brought back to another meeting to see whether and how it's to be taken forward. So can we move on to the next item, which is the Chandos Park street, and I can remember that person had a visit from. A student from the, uh, Buckingham University Students Union here, and, you know. Really taking us a little bit further. Anything you, uh, would like to add to the report?
I've gone away, popped down the tunnel before the fair, and that completely surprised how well the car was left. Um, I was a bit worried that there might be gaps or some of the lights weren't quite positioned right, um, but in my opinion, it's. Well, little on the path to main paths in, in the park, um, and that's what we've always tried to do is when. Uh, lights up correctly, remain thorough there too, um. But, in my opinion, that's what we should, you know, we should continue to do, um. If you want, yeah, and I, I love it, it's great to light up the whole park, we've been so much for lighting, lighting, so.
Mm-hmm.
Light up area, don't need it, um, so I, I think it's okay at the moment.
From the student who was quite evidently distressed and concerned about it, if you remember when they came. Um, have we received any other concerns about the park in the same way? Or was that just, um, one person, person representing, I believe, other people at the university? And, and if, if the pathway isn't lit, if we were to change anything, we have to consider the residents of Shandos Road. Who, who probably enjoy the fact that their gardens aren't illuminated at night. And their bedroom windows aren't illuminated, because they've got streetlights, hopefully, will carry on being run through the winter, um, not turned off. Um, you know. But the other thing is, are we sure that if we do anything with them, whether they're over a period of time, we'll change the bulbs for. Um, the more efficient ones, I suppose, uh, uh, over time.
We had that a few years ago, then, although you did.
And you did, so.
So it lasted quite a while, when we do maintain, um.
I'll compliment you on what you do, um, but to put more posts in would be very much expensive.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, and we then have to go out to full consultation, I believe, with the residents to tell why we're doing it.
Hmm.
I think.
Um, yes, I think very much, I, I think once again, I would commend the Green Team again, because every time I walk through Chandos Park, it's all lit, uh, I've got complaints there. Um, I can understand why, um, some students may find it uncomfortable, um, because if they come from the city. And you come to a village and you see darker areas, it might, it might be a little strange for you, um. I think what we need to find out is if there had been any incidents at the park, I can't remember, I'm not sure if anything's been reported, I think the park is safe. Um, but we also need to let, um, residents and, um, students also understand that. Buckingham is still a, I don't want to use village as a town, but we want that village atmosphere as well. And that's why we want to reduce the amount of lights we have around. I also noticed that the police is well known in support of it, um, so I think that shows to be highlighted. If, um, we have any more complacency in this, um, if there are any incidents in the park, I think it would be important for us to then revisit this. But if not, I think, find the words.
Yeah.
We have had a lot of antisocial behaviour around the toilet block in Chandos, and vandalism issues. Very much our opinion is, if we light that area up, it is going to increase because it's giving everybody a nice weatherly area to be antisocial in instead of. Um, at the moment, where it's dark. So there is a problem there, Lee has had extensive meetings with the neighbourhood policing team about. But, um, about this problem, but it is basically vandalism, um. I'm not aware that it's unsafe or such for anybody walking through, it's typically called teenagers wanting to. Get out on the toilet, not having some graffiti.
Hmm.
Yes, I thought it actually bothered me graffiti, and, uh, so I think, um, there's been quite a lot of it completed by graffiti in town. Um, I don't know if, as a commitee as a council, um, might want to, and this, this might be quite. Designing an area for kids to come and draw, because, um, I think the way state boarded and. Border skating at a point in time used to be a menace, um, now it's in the Olympics, right? Um, some people see graffiti as an art, some people see it as an amusement, um, if we can designate an area. Um, maybe a wall somewhere encouraging them to do it there, maybe, um, it's a suggestion, um, or something that we might want to look into. Uh, but I do not condone, um, graffiti being put into anywhere, but I think we might want to look at that and encourage youths. Who want to express their art, um, to have a secret to that.
I think, yes, uh, something we definitely could look at. A lot of the graffiti we're seeing at the moment is, is tagging. It's obviously not purely art, that's sending a message out. Um, the neighbourhood team have been making some progress on that, I think we had a, a letter of apology from a trial. Um, today in fact, that are good, visited by the police and was dealt with by a community resolution that involved having to send a letter of apology. So hopefully, the neighbourhood team are starting to get on top of it, and the weather will change as well, which means it's cold and it's dark and it's raining. Or is anywhere near as much, I think, production, yes.
Lisa.
Thank you, I know it goes slightly off topic because of, um, talking about graffiti now, but, um, this was discussed at the. Um, youth cafe meeting for the community board, and, um. It was an idea going back years ago that we, um, were going to try and do something on the Ganterton's Wall, where Skate Park. Um, but Ganterton's own it, so there was always issue, there's issues around that, but there's been ideas floating around for a long time. About doing an art project with young people, and graffiti art, so, you know, it's not just tagging, it's actual artwork.
There was a lady who came to the group, Lisa was at the meeting, I was at, and, um. I think that she'll probably make some contact, because the town council are through another committee involved in the. Youth, um, caf project, so, or will be, so I think we'll take up those conversations, because many of the areas in the ground we don't own. The skate park belongs to Buckinghamshire Council, and it's on a, it's a, piece of land belongs to a charity. Uh, which can only be used for public use, um, and because now it's, perhaps if the skate park was actually repaired, fixed and. Replaced, it might be a focus of more attentionally positive activities than the broken skate park they've got at the moment.
Okay, so I don't think there's a decision we need to take on this, not that we, we need to notice, noted and discussed. Yeah, the report, thank you very much for it.
Do you want to propose on that, Chair? Would you like to propose?
Neither.
No, I don't know, I just.
I certainly need a proposal on this, there was a proposal.
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, isn't it? We will observe the situation, but I don't think we need to, uh, have a formal decision on that one.
Okay.
Um, then point number seven, the Brachley Road Sanctuary Wall renovation proposal. Again, we have got quite an internet report from Lee, and I think before we want to say a little bit about it.
And this is regarding the, uh, wall, or the range of the wall, uh, between the old park sanctuary and the extension. Uh, so the lower wall, brick wall, uh, and railings or slatter them. But over, over the years, uh, the brutes from the, the pine trees there have just did the wall and got the railings, we've taken, taken down, we can't say. We can say, um, get them stored safely, uh, but we, we've sort of been thinking about what the best solution to, to the problem is. Um, it's not a good, a matter of just repairing the wall and putting the railings back, just because the bricks are going to keep moving in any time. And it's wasting money and time, so we, we, we thought a good solution would be basically retaining, repair both ends of the walls. So where the pillars are, and a section behind the old golden rest. And on the other side, there's a pillar, which is leaning quite badly, and a section of all, and which is acting like a retaining wall. Um, because it's a quite a big, big drop in level, so repairing, but those sections as far as we can. And then retaining, repairing the section where the stone, the brick pillars are, when you walk through to the extension, uh, with the steam section running. But the rest taking the wall out completely, um, and rep planting with a U H basically.
Hmm.
Um, we thought that would be the best solution in terms of, you know, cost and longevity as well. Uh, so this is just to try and get all's approval, allow straight on, get, you know, more detail prices.
Hmm.
Um, and for that.
I'm going to make a reason, thank you.
This has been an ongoing thing with the wars for ten, fifteen, probably twenty years, in the sense that. When the wars are put in, the ones along Stoke Avenue, and there've been retreats on that historically because of the. Residents, I think it's the right, the only thing I'd ask, Lee, is that if we do this and plant the U hedge. Is the bricks actually have some value? Um, the bricks are, they're, they're lime watered, aren't they? They're not cement, so we could perhaps, um, they've got quite a lot of value to them, second hand bricks, so we could actually pallet them up and sell them and actually. Defray some of the cost of the actual thing, it seems, at the time doing it. If they were to cement it, then I wouldn't suggest it, you can't actually chip cement that I've done salvaging bricks, and you can't really do it. But with lime bricks, you can actually save them back, and a pallet of bricks would, that's quite a bit of money, um, to be sold on, which would. Have, have some of the U hedge, the bottom of the works.
As I recall, that was in.
So that's, that's part of the power, along with the metal rings, and that's just some pooping, probably salvage as well.
Didn't see that.
It's not anywhere in that, it's all in the pages and things, and I haven't noticed it, it's, I've been told before, yeah.
But the main piece of work, or one main piece of work, is the pillar, which we stripped all the oil on there, is in quite a bad state, to prepare. Basically, we're glad I was not saying it, but at least I knew what I wanted to do. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's issued with the pooping on the, on the one pillar that we want to repair, it's in a bad state. Bad state, we may not be able to replace it exactly, I guess, it's a, it's a issue.
Lisa, thank you. And, yeah, I'm happy to go with recommendation, um, I think it's a good one and needs to be moved forward, so I'm happy with that.
Hmm, well.
If, if I may, it's, 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 it had a tangent to the, to this talk, I did notice when I was up there, the. Small icon with the chap, I was on, I'm sure there's a pop and bang, I noticed the doors looked as though they could do with a bit of maintenance. So I thought this might be just the opportunity to raise a small flag, I don't expect some great debates about it, but just to make a little nod.
There's a few things, things we've got in line that we've gone to one of them, and you have one of the doors, that's, it came, it's on the bags.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, thank you, Liv. Thank you, Chair.
People will notice the chance, Chairman, and I think we need to build communication around why we're doing this, because people will say. Um, are you taking the walls out? My, um, my relatives, relatives are buried either side of it, and, and. And that could in itself, um. Be quite emotive or upsetting or still, I think we need to communicate with firstly the. Will know in the new cemetery who all those residents are, and let them know why we're doing it, and that it's nothing, because they'll come back and say, didn't tell us. But we don't need to tell, we should tell them just out of courtesy. Is it, well, I've had internet trouble all day, because they chop my internet through that, um, but, um, I think we should, um, do that.
Yeah, okay, so what we're asking at the moment is just, and really, I'm sure that this is something you'd be happy to do. Just we can go and get the pricing on it, because there's no point in going out pretending that there's going to be a position to replace it with a hedge.
Can I please suggest a recommendation, Lee?
Okay, so, uh, is everybody happy with this? Any? Okay, so before, so certainly, but I'm, that's my answer, but really good answer.
Mine?
Sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a point?
Now, you've got a point that says access awareness, you didn't say anything, you're not, but only just spotted it.
It's one of your items that we, we consult every contender.
Yeah.
If you're going to.
Oh, just, is anybody aware of it? Yeah, go on.
I need it.
I'm sorry.
Um, I need it, make you aware that. We have the tax and events and disability in the town centre, and, and we. I think we were in agreement, we were going to take some action on all, especially around that issue. I think one of the things which I'm concerned about, and I said in that meeting, I'll say it now, is that, um. Start, we, we were very privileged to have councillor Strain Clark, who was representing the actual, I don't think the access. Aware group is as active as they once were, and many of the things I said in the last meeting, that they. The information they provided to us managed, which changed the way we did things, which was like. We, 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 we took on a disability toilets and we took on all this, and it, and it was the partnership with that, and we did the access awareness day. I think we need to be, um, we need to be ever presently conscious of this, because. Clearly, from circumstances, we're not getting the input from them, and what I want, what I just drift away from that good position we were doing. Where we were leading as a councillor on many things to do with disability and access, and having a member who we can agree was so. Good for us, um, we write in this group as well, if you ever look, just ask them if there's anybody or what the condition of their. The access to wherever, because it could be people, if they're suffering with membership in the community, who want to be involved in that, who may. Through lives change and circumstances, have the time to, uh, give to it, um, because it's a one word of course. Um, a one word of thing, and, um, and at the moment, we don't have lots of things raised on the agenda, and I miss them. It's every meeting, Christine or someone would bring in something to our attention, and I think if you're not disabled, we can't see it in the same way.
So, sorry.
I, I've exhibited, I want to make contact with the access hall group and ask them what the circumstances are, because if they haven't got a very active group.
They're not actually, do you see any agenda?
Yeah, I know, I'm bringing it up here, because it still is, it should be, action is on everybody's agenda, and it should not be. By the way, there'll be things to do with the parks, which are relevant to this, which they might want to discuss, we've had them discuss about accessibility in the park before. Um, and we actually did lots of work on improving footways in parks because of what they did, um, Shandos Park particularly. Um, so I think it's, um, ever present that we need to do that, because otherwise over a period of five or ten years. That will strip away and will slip from the position we are today.
I will, yeah, thank you. I'm not sure what the best way to order is, but just on that issue of the parks, I think that's one of the things that came up in that green flag. Report, they were commending the accessibility of Bolton Park, weren't they? And I'm sure it's, the accessibility is equally good at, um, Chandos Park, apart from the bridge over to the university, of course. Um, which is not really doable.
University grid.
Yeah, so, um, I, I'm not sure that we need to double count and write from two separate committees to the access group. I think it's good enough that we're writing to them, and I'm sure we can feed from one committee to another. And we don't want to burden the staff with unnecessary letters, so I think it is entirely, okay. We're running one as asset power, yes.
Okay, then moving on, item nine, big little update, so again, we've got the report with Nina.
It was just like, members really observed, what is the, the exit stations, we've had tissue, we've done lies. Damaged, it was stolen, uh, replaced and, you were quite good at it, it is, on the time, uh, what cost. Uh, but for now, we've decided to remove them, just, that cost of replacing it, and what we consider we can do with them. Uh, but as a temporary measure, the kits still are available, uh, so people can contact town council. All the information on the website and how to do that, so it's a group, so, if it's a pity, we can provide, um, the kit. Um, in bags and probably have them with, in with rubber. So it's a group, it's a, it's a, we can provide, um, the kit, um, bin bags and probably have them with, with rubbish as well. Um, so these still available there, um, it is a bit disappointing.
Um.
This is, well, I've said for a while, but, um, yeah, when we put them in channels, it didn't survive. And so we'll, we'll still keep considering it and figure out what we can do, do in the spring.
Um, thank you for that update. It's a real shame that.
Yeah.
You know, I'm like, yeah, pick as well as missing. And because we haven't got fifty pounds at the time, fifty pounds, is that even here, or all the, all the, all the collection? You know, whole kit, fifty pounds, instead of fifty pounds property, because the bins. Lit, it is, I suppose, but they're not that expensive when you compare to what they can do, uh.
But just about two hundred pounds for some, for some locations.
I mean, we didn't buy any in the river, in Bolton Park, did we? Um, so they weren't in the river, so I don't know where they've gone. But I think it's like to take them home with them. Um, um, and they've got an avid, avid litter picking problem. But each, they want to come out every week, tend them, and they don't like to give them back, they've had so much fun with them. Um, but, um, but it wasn't in the river because we'd have found them. Um, so I don't know where they've gone, and the Shandor Park River.
Are still having the features kind of stated.
Yeah, I mean, now they are, you can have quite, you could have quite a. A bit of fun with them if you weren't using the litter picking zone. But I think, can we bring this back in the spring, Karen, to discuss whether we want to do it again? Because it would be the summer months when the parks are well used, that the litter goes up and it probably did contribute positively to.
So maybe, so maybe you'll think about and see how we can do, do that tomorrow.
So we can bring it back to the committee at some point in the spring and see what, what if anything we can do for next summer.
Taking on what the mayor's point about observing people and the fact is that it is summer. When we have more litter in the park.
Yes. Okay. Now then, we, one number then, the Red River Watering Group. And we've got a report there. So this is a link from Nina. Yeah, Brian.
Just to say that's where your three thousand pounds are.
Um.
Madam Mayor, when you're wondering where it comes from, it's in that report. Um. But I do think that it's a good report and if that all comes off, it's going to, um, I mean, and. Can I just add for you the, the bit of the background to that? Did we apply for that? If we did, I don't remember, or did, was it something that, um. Um, they applied for.
Sorry, have we applied for that?
Yeah.
That was six hundred pounds, and wait for us, that's something that Nina saw.
In which case, can we record in the minutes, our thanks to the officers, we've got the privilege of getting our money there.
Um.
I think it's good to say thank you, because that's three thousand pounds we haven't got to ask the, uh, residents of Buckingham for.
Three thousand six hundred pounds. So I think you can wait for those as well.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, wait, that would just about buy you one week shopping with Nick and Mike free.
Are there any other comments on this agenda item?
No, there's no challenge, very good. Um, because there was an agreement to receive funding there for what other persons. Yeah, second. You know, thank you very much.
And when we get it, you can back it up.
Yes, yeah, they're not going to decide to not have it.
That would be an opportunity, wouldn't it?
Yes, but. We need to be sensible, it's money and we perceive it.
We need to admit it now.
Yeah. And then moving on to cemetery things, to receive an agreement, the report. Guarding the cemetery, please uplift for the coming year. Again, for a, a report from me here at night. Well, we can.
Yeah, it's, it's the annual uplift, uh, so from, that'll be from September, April. And but just really know how, because it goes in the budget, so that we know what to budget for the year. And of course, yeah, we always use the R P R, uh, as of September or the process month. Uh, so if we have to add again.
Margaret. I I propose that we accept the report and follow the recommendations, as is, as normal policy.
Yeah, and second. Um, can we go straight to her?
I just asked a question. Historically, some of the plots were purchased, we stopped that policy because of this shortage of plots.
Pre-purchasing.
Pre-purchasing pots, um. That, if I missed it, if it's in there, I apologize, but we haven't got any, um. Budget line for that, how many of them we have got, because. I'm not sure how many, can we just, some, like, they're having group, group paid plots we've got, because it is important, because when they come forward. We've already taken money on another various years, which won't be in keeping with this uplift from last year. It might have been even the year before that, when we, or the year before that, when we checked the decision league.
To be known for purchase by new plots.
Yeah, because what we purchased them for, when I covered the, the cost of what it is today and what we're doing, there's going to be a gap. Would I be wrong or am I wrong, having I'm wrong, but, um, there'd be gaps and just, can we have a estimate about what that is? I don't think it's going to show itself immediately. Um, but at some point, we'll have a gap in funding because of decision.
They've already paid for it, but now prices have gone up because it costs more for us to do.
There's a gap in funding, we need to look at what we agree with them, whether we can actually go back to them, justify the answer with the gap in, but if we can't.
Um.
We need to. It's separate, so in terms of the, the trial, when they're used more.
Yeah, um, I just need to know that.
So there isn't a direct cost to the approach of the plot. Because what we need to really, what we are actually supposed to do, as they says, in term of separately. I've not explained that well at all.
So what we're losing is the higher fee that we would get if we were selling it now, but we're not actually out of pocket. Because our costs, the actual cost that we're incurring by. Interim people, that is charged at the time that it happens anyway, that hasn't, that isn't charged at the time of the pre-purchase.
And and that money we have to be, yeah.
Okay, so.
We have had hold on pre-purchase as well, but it's six, seven years or so.
Yeah, okay.
No, that's okay, because it is many issues within in the report, you know, you give me good answers, so I want it. Thank you.
Okay, so, um. Can we go on?
Check it right, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so this is unanimous. To receive and discuss updates to the client, can we, I think, to action plan?
Margaret. Thank you. Can I just ask about the eco audit? Has that been?
Yeah, it's, um, it's still being received with the, uh, chap who's doing the survey. I think he goes for many, many years worth of surveying for it. Um, whilst, 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 I feel like it was going on, I was talking to Nina about it today, actually, and we're still pursuing it. Where I think it'll come through as soon as possible, because that'd be quite a bit of work, I think, actually, from over.
Seems to have been ongoing for a long while, but I I just wondered if I'd missed something, but. And the other thing, on page forty one or forty four. It's explore more bike parking facilities around the town. I did notice when I cycled to the Riverins, there were no bike racks in the car park or anywhere near the car park in Walton Park. And I wonder whether that is one of the sites which you're considering.
My little plan, um, it was subject to funding, I think it was just that funding strategy. Before we did it, or I had a budget, normally for things like that, we can use the maintenance budget at the end of the year. I think this year we're going to use it on maintenance.
Um, so what cost would that be to?
Um, it's not normally, we get to frame themselves quite cheap, but we, they need to on hard, hard servicing, we found. Good for the moment, grass, which is not giving that money now, so it's the cost of the servicing, what it's on. And we can incorporate that in some other projects. And there's various other little projects that we'd like to, um, access friendly projects. One of them is to put, and put some, pass to some of the, um, access friendly benches and that kind of thing. We can incorporate it into a project like that, and we can get funding for. That's all right, yeah, then, we're looking to play areas and, you know, car park and successful areas like that.
Um.
Both.
Um. So it is, it it does encourage me to use my bike if I know I can leave it somewhere securely.
So, so it's, I'm looking at that.
Um, yeah.
Lisa.
Thank you, because it's kind of sports and leisure, could we not put it under our wishlist, section one O six? That we find plots now, map it out, so these are the areas that we would like, like, bike racks to go. And we have that as a project under section one O six.
That, that is part of my plan.
I remember.
My plan is we're actually, this is what we're working on.
Yeah, I remember.
Quite large projects. Uh, but we'll probably come back and get more detail. And we're servicing the parts of the major, major project, what we do to the common system, the local map, the results and pieces. And there's, there's various items that come in, like the notice boards again.
Yeah.
Tied now, uh, we keep replacing the perspex to get vandalised. Put aside now as well, so it's, when you make it all together.
Yeah.
So we've got to get a plan for the whole of it, we can get all the funded, off go.
Because this, this is what I'm thinking is, because a lot of that wouldn't come under sports and leisure. That this is something that we have been talking about for many, many years, back when Mike was, you know, showing for him and Ruth. Um, whether we just hone this as a project and get the bike racks moving. So we don't lump it all in with the, the paths and noticeable, because that is massive. And we know that is, because again, paths have been on the, on the agenda for many years. Um, but we just look at bike racks and where we can put them and go, go for funding just for those. Is there a group, Margaret, is something that just hasn't been done?
That's going to be part of the management plans, to try and section it down a bit. We realize we can't do all the marks, but if we can break it down a bit and get funding for it over so many years.
Yeah.
Do the easy stuff quickly first.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
My understanding of section one O six isn't great, but what you can't do is add. A wish onto a section one O six agreement, so I think it's a reasonable suggestion that we. Seek to add it to any future section one O six agreement that we.
That's what I mean then.
Yeah, in it, because what we can't do, the ones we've got running.
I wasn't talking about that.
No, I know, but, um, I misunderstood, but, um, but, um, pardon me, I, I think that add it. To the new wishlist, in the sense, I think that's the right way again about it, because we have got. Um, they're drafting the section one O six at the moment for Maymont Road Free.
Oh.
Um, that's got to be drafted, it's something that we could ask to be put into that section one O six. It would mitigate traffic movements from that development.
Wow.
So that, that, it, 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 they can justify that, I think. So, um, they, 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 they can't, um, how they're going to mitigate traffic, but this would be offering cycle racks in the town centre. So the bit, if people did cycle from there, they would use vehicles, and I think that's a reasonable way to do it. It's, it, and it's close to the town centre, so, and and the park, and the other one is, I think, Ozzy Way, um.
Think they've done that, one of them, Ozzy Way.
They haven't signed it off yet.
No.
Not to the best of my knowledge, um, I haven't been able to find.
Put together the section one O six wish list, this possibly something, I think, for council, not having an.
Yeah.
We have got on already, um, to centre, have this as a separate, like, little, not a little project, but projects that we get moving on it.
But we have, could approve this agreement, which, um, we took account of, which allowed our town clerk to. Um, talk about section one O six, which we voted at full council and we took through the motion, because we realized some of these things. Can be done through proper conversations with town clerk and the officers. Where we wait until we make a decision, we miss out and, and, and some of this stuff, we just asked it to be included in those conversations. Especially in the Morton Road one, uh, even into the Ozzy Way one, if it hasn't actually.
Um.
Um, I don't think it's, um, to the best of my knowledge, or been signed off completely yet. Um, and they've got to mitigate the traffic and movements from that one, and it seems, it seems an obvious thing to do. Um, which would answer, finding the mayor somewhere to park the bike, which.
Bike racks are absolutely great, but, um, how would they help people like me who can't even ride a bike? Do you think that's something you could, um, try to help people like me with? And the other thing is, is, um, I, I'm a new, um, electric car owner.
Yeah.
And it's been a real struggle finding out how everything works. I initially, kind of, I didn't know where to start. I got into it from the, um, town meeting. Where we have the guys from Milton Keynes telling us about them. But, I mean, still, I have no idea how those points in Cornwall's red house works at all. And I've, I've got, I've got, I've got my, my recharging point at home. That was a struggle to even find out how to get that, but, you know, maybe people need a bit more. Um, information and help, how to make the switch.
This is just because me, as soon as speaking, Warren White is a great advocate of all things the electronic. Um, and I wonder whether he could be approached to actually see what sensibly could be done for people exactly. Who are on the cusp of leaping into the electric world.
I think we had that thing at the town council meeting, true, Warren, that was.
But, um, I, I was just picking it up and suggesting, as you raised it, whether he would be kind enough to. Even if he only points us in right directions, but he's the logical man for the job, and was.
Yeah, like. I think it's, yeah, I think it's probably a bit beyond, um, town council, really, but. In Milton, Milton Keynes, Milton Keynes Council had, had, um, supported, um. What point was it, um, uh, to, to have very cheap loans of electric vehicles? Um, I see, I see emails from, um, Martin Ted saying, oh, we're encouraging. Electric vehicles, why don't they encourage it a bit more and set up a scheme similar to Milton Keynes Council set up? So it has to be a bit beyond our range, it's beyond, yeah.
Margaret. Yeah, thank you, um, Warren actually does run a group called Buckinghamshire Electric Vehicles Group or something like that.
There's a page.
It is a bit beyond just having useful information, he actually actively promotes it.
Oh, yes, I wasn't believing.
Over here, yeah, that he would be a, a great source of information.
Um, yeah, okay, but I'm not sure what we're asking for, uh, the committee would be coming out of this.
No.
There's the ones, and I'm, okay, um. Not the most.
And there's a rich discussion, but I, I mean, I, I believe track the things we've drafted for you, but, um.
Yeah.
Like a cow, I wouldn't allow to plug in.
Although it has been a good discussion, it's a pay group one, because we really have to find a lot of stuff to get through tonight. Yeah, so, um, we'll pick this up some other time. Is that, is there any more?
No, just if we can ask Champot to look into section one O six on bike racks, if possible. Okay.
But we'll have some formal discussions, um, I mean, he's pointing about if we're going to get somebody into Tarmax and paths, and that might be a good.
Yeah.
Time to, to, and some bike racks as well.
Yeah.
Okay, and then one thing, updates from representatives on outside bodies, Margaret?
Yeah, thank you, I, I did attend the Rural and Market Towns Group meeting on the eleventh of October, which. Was entitled, the government's levelling up approach, straight rural cost of living crisis. I have sent the chair and a lot of people, the town clerk, I'm not sure. Um, copies of those notes, but they could possibly go with the minutes rather than the. I mean, it was quite a useful meeting, I have found that quite a good group, I think you attended something similar subsequently.
Yeah, there's an, an officer steering group.
Yeah.
Well.
And there were some good suggestions, one of which is relating to a questionnaire. I don't know that we've been sent it again, though, they were supposed to be recirculating.
I'm expecting some tapping from them, but I don't have any.
Um, because, you know, a lot of the issues that we face in Buckingham are faced by other market, rural and market towns and. When you go to a meeting like that, you realise.
Yeah.
Um, other people are, are having similar issues and some people come up with various solutions to those issues, so it's good to share. Um, other people are, are having similar issues, and some people come up with various solutions to those issues, so it's good to share that information. Perhaps if I send that to Paula then, is that okay? Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Margaret. Margaret.
Just to make a point, it might be worth members, um, I'm going to a transport environment meeting this week because of the report on sewage or of management. It might be something this committee wants to look at, um, and study those committee agendas, especially the bits around the environment and climate, um, reports in the future, if there's something that is relevant to this committee members to go and ask questions about. I should be asking a question about the sewage report, because it's, um, it's less than, um, forward thinking about Buckingham, it does a lot of work on the chest, and, and it hasn't got much about the Thames. And, and though the report is quite worthy, you know, we've had pollution in Buckingham, haven't we not? And, um, and, um, it's not just to, to, but I do think it might be something that the committee could take on board, study in those environment and transport, especially bits around the environment, because there'll be things in there that, positions taken about us here, which we might want to actually question before they take them.
Any other points? Then we have, I don't know, news releases.
Going back to the elongated discussion we had about the work in the sandwiches, what we're doing, um, I think it's, um, we communicate to people, if we're creating this appropriate, I suppose, we a, a, a point for, in the future of choosing when we're ready to do that, because it's something around, usually around it, explaining why we're doing it, explain what we're doing, so that it, it, everyone doesn't then come along afterwards and say, well, they're taking those wars down, I cared about those wars for thirty years, and, um, but there's a reason why the decision was taken, both economical and practical, so I think that the future through the chair and the officers to do a rest of it on that.
Definitely, I would ask them that until we've done full tender, we know specifically, packing what it is that we need to do.
In the future.
It would be, but after we've had that tender.
I'm sure the chairman and officers can do that.
Does that come back to a future meeting?
It'll save me a lot of time if I work with Buckingham.
Okay. Chair's announcement, uh, announcements, well, it's only one, Margaret and I both attended a conference by the Buckinghamshire and Milton Keynes Association of Local Councils, and, uh, the word salad that's made of the, of the letter salad isn't any more pronounceable. And it's very Tuesday last week. This was a very long and quite interesting day around climate change. And Margaret has agreed that she'll write a phrasey and I'll add something to this, we'll bring this to a future meeting, there are things, there were things in there which we can probably take forward. Uh, certainly when we're looking at, you know, the new neighbourhood plan, and there's certain other things that may or may not be applicable to us. There was a lot about corrugated roofs, which is probably not easily applied, uh, due to the absence of any flat roofs, but there were other things that might, you know, like, have proof for discussions around.
Sounds good. Well, thank you for that, eh? Thank you, Scott, Margaret.
And then the next meeting is Monday, the nineteenth of December.
You bring minutes wise up on that.
I'm actually still a minor. Minutes wise. So disheartening. Recommendation, I think, leaving two products.
Yes.
Yeah, we're all happy to move into the private session, in which case, we need to, uh, we will switch off the, uh, YouTube.